It's called the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to Order on Wednesday, November 4th. I have it at 6:01 PM. Is that accurate? And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pigley, Wakeley, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Bill Wilson and seconded by Devon Elliott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Alright, so we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance and we'll all look at Inga's screen since I'm in my office. And any volunteers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Linda, okay, great.
Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, so we have public comments regarding items which can be affected by the Common Council action. So we have some nonprofit presentations and so I'm thinking that some of you are here for them and may be here to comment on them. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on something else? Inga, if you know of anyone?
Um, I'm not sure. There's Carrie Kunkel and I'm not sure if she wanted to speak now or if she's just listening tonight or what her intent is.
I'm just listening.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't see anybody else. Inga, we're good to go on number five then? Okay. Approval of Common Council Meeting Minutes from October 20th. Are there any deletions, questions, additions?
Moved to approve it.
Okay. Moved by Ryan and seconded by Linda. Teresa, you're almost in there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Alright, so we have our presentations by our nonprofits. So welcome everyone. And I don't know who wants to go first, Milton House or Gathering Place?
I would like to go first.
You would? Okay, alright.
If the Milton House doesn't mind, I mean, she's got to listen to me and carry on, so.
She's smiling, so we must be good.
Okay, good deal.
Alright.
Alright, so I'm hopeful that the information I sent to everyone got to everyone. Is that, is that true? Looks like I get a lot of nods. Okay. So again, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Dave Fisher, the Executive Director of the Gathering Place. I'm under the assumption that all of you understand what the Gathering Place is and what we do for the community. But again, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll try not to be too long-winded. I sometimes get that way. You can interrupt me at any time with any questions and I would certainly be open to any of those. So moving forward, I just basically want to go over what I've sent you. We appreciate all that you've done for us in the past, especially $10,000 last year. You know what, we're really thankful for what the City of Milton does for us. You know, I know that you guys are going through budgetary issues and trying to figure it out. For those of you that know Herb Stinski, I go through that with him for the Gathering Place and that can be challenging at times, but he's sure as sharp as a tack. And looking at 2021, based on the way 2020 has gone and the unpredictability of the COVID and how that affects our program. And it's just, it's just, it's a super challenge. So anyway, what can I tell you that you don't already know about the Gathering Place? I've given you some statistics there to look at and I'm sure you reviewed them. You know, we basically got 500 members. We're open Monday through Friday from 8 till 4 in normal times. I've listed a ton of activities that we do in the course of any given month. The place is abuzz with activities. We have about 70 folks that come through our doors every single day. You know, that computes over 17,000 visits a year. You know, in a normal year, in a normal year, we have 50 special events. That includes fundraisers, weddings, receptions, celebrations of life. All kinds of fundraisers and such. You know, it computes to about 23,000 visits a year. You know, to make that happen, we have lots of volunteers, 250 plus. They give us 15,000 hours a year. You know, I know that nonprofits like ours, we survive on the backs of volunteers and folks giving that many hours. They must think a lot of our program or they wouldn't give those hours and give that commitment. You know, through this pandemic, you know, we've been closed since the middle of March. Just in case you're curious, I mean, we, there's, we have, we've cut our staff hours in half, basically. Since the middle of March, I've had my events coordinator laid off. We're going to make some dramatic changes on top of what we're doing starting the first of the year. I can talk a little bit about that. But let me just tell you, the one thing that's really been a staple for us and a critical program, and I mentioned it here in this little information packet to you, is about the Senior Nutrition Program that happens in our, that happens Monday through Friday in our kitchen. That program is for elderly seniors. It's a two-facet program right now. Folks that are able can drive up and get a meal every day, Monday through Friday. And for those that are homebound, we have volunteers that come out of our kitchen and deliver meals through the Milton area. And on any given day, well, today was a big day. They served 62 meals to seniors driving up and home delivery. But it's a, it's a pretty big deal. Since the middle of March, we've probably put, well, I know we have, we've put over 7,200 meals out to seniors. And if you know the program, it's, and folks reference this Senior Nutrition Program, similar to what Meals on Wheels is, but it's a, it's a separate program. But it's basically supporting seniors in their home. You know, it's vital. I, prior to where I worked prior to this, I was in charge of the Senior Nutrition Program in Green County. And I know that when folks get these home-delivered meals, a lot of those seniors that are receiving those meals, that's primarily their only meal a day. And I know a lot of them, you know, elderly folks don't eat a lot. They split that meal and they have half for lunch and half for dinner. That's just the reality of it. And by golly, if, if the Gathering Place wasn't able to allow our kitchen to be used for that, I'd have some real concerns for some of our elderly in our community that would not be receiving the nutrition that this program allows. So, you know, in, in doing this with the Rock County Senior Nutrition Program, it requires the Gathering Place to do a few things. One, we have to have a staff here that works through that process four hours a day. We, I mean, you know, these, these folks are not staff members that are running that program. So we have to have a staff here. That, that requires X amount of dollars a day that we're paying folks. The program runs 250 days a year that we're serving them. You know, we've got the lights on, we've got the heat on, you know, the water, bathrooms, the whole nine yards. There's, there's several thousands of dollars, and I can be more specific. But to keep this program afloat for the, for the vulnerable seniors in our community, it's just a huge program that we, that we support here at the Gathering Place. And I don't know if you all are aware of that, but it's, it's really a pretty big deal. You know, things that we normally do in the course of a year, we really haven't been able to do. The one thing we've got coming up though is that we always honor our veterans. We're going to have a drive-up catered meal that veterans are able to participate in and at least get a meal on that day for recognition of what the services they've done for us. And I mentioned to you, if you know anybody that qualifies for that service, give us a call or have them call us. We'll put them on the list. We'd love to honor them and, and that's just a small thing that we can do. That, that will be done separately. The, the meals going out that particular day, we're going to host that event after the regular nutrition program runs at 11 o'clock and 11:30. So that'll be at noon. You know, a couple of, a couple of notes, just FYI. You know, I can't stress the fact that we really do appreciate the support you guys have given us and I know that these are tough times. But here's, here's what we're, we're expecting. Two things that are, that you just should keep in mind is that starting the first of the year, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, we're going to be cutting back our staff. I'm going to be going to three-fifths time. I'm laying off another full-time staff. My maintenance person is going to be working just primarily to keep the parking lot clean. My administrative assistant is going to be helping get the newsletter out and pay the bills. We're going to skeleton staffing starting the first of the year until we get a grasp on this, this COVID and how it's going to unfold. You know, I, I'm generally an optimistic person. I'm not as optimistic as I should be moving forward with this and I'm sure you folks are worried about it too. It's just the way life is right now and we're just dealing with it. But, you know, so we're, we're doing our due diligence here at the Gathering Place because we, we serve and support the most vulnerable adults in the, in the community. You know, and that's, there's no hiding that and that's, that's just the way it is. But then, and then the last thing I'll leave you with, and then you can grill me all you want, is that I know you've had to have driven around to the west side of our building and see the, the progress of the Gathering Green Development that we've got going. We're really excited about this in so many ways, but it's finally taken a little root. And I just, I'll just, I'll just share some thoughts about that. Is that I took a beating when we cut those trees down and I'm sure every one of you heard about it. But when we had, we had a forester come in and look at our, our two-acre layout there and they basically advised us that the trees that are there are basically volunteer or undesirables. It, it didn't meet our, our design that Angus Young put together for us, so we had to take them out. And I can tell you, I'm sure every one of you heard it, I heard it from every corner, that how could we do that and so on and so forth. However, since that time, we've, we've made some dramatic improvements. If you haven't been by recently, they're starting to pour concrete for the walkways. There's, we've had our parking lot paved this week. They're moving some dirt around. We've had some mature trees replanted on this, on the spot. And, you know, we're looking forward to getting all that stuff done before the ground freezes and, and then we can just put things on hold until the spring. But, you know, questions might be asked, you know, where are we getting the money to do this? We generated these funds prior to the COVID hitting. We met with some area business folks and some really real supporters of the Gathering Place and we had a little stash put aside so that we could start this project. Because obviously, if you know, we've, we've sat on this, this piece of property for a while and it was just time and we have an active board now. And they're supporting the development. But the reason, one of the key reasons that we're doing this, and for some of you folks that, that are new on the, on the council, the Gathering Place is, we, you know, we're, I'm very transparent. We're very transparent about our program. We got a budget of about $300,000. Of half of that money comes from an annual grant that we apply for through the Allen Foundation. Marion Allen, she gifted this building and this space to the City of Milton 28 years ago and basically said, here it is, this million and a half dollar beautiful program, building, structure, program here in the city and said, basically, here it is, you make it work. And, and we do and, and we apply for a grant every year. And the Allen Foundation gives us about 50% of our budget, which is about $150,000. So to make things work, to meet the bills of that other $150,000, we have fundraisers, we have rentals, we have alcohol sales, we have membership, and so on and so forth to generate that balance of our budget of $150,000. Guess what? In 2020, we were closed since the middle of March. We've probably, we've lost over a hundred and, well, a little over $100,000 in revenue that we would generally get in returns from our efforts that are just not available this year. And if, and if the COVID continues in the, in the first part of next year, I sure hope not, but, you know, it's going to really hit, hurt our budget. So it's, it's just, it's just critical of the support you guys give us. We're sincerely thankful for, for everything you do for us, but we hope you keep us in mind. And, you know, and I, Al and Lisa, forgive me for saying this, but you know, when you look at that, that request that we're making on a $5 million budget, you're talking of less than a half of 1% of the support that you guys to give to us. And I know you know that this is a valuable asset to the community, but it's in your total budget, and I know you look at a lot of stuff, you know, less than one-half of 1% for the, for the, probably one of the nicest senior centers in the state of Wisconsin. And God only knows, if, if things go well, we can whip this pandemic and develop our property. What that development's going to do for the city, I mean, we've got, we've got some grandiose, I shouldn't say we, I'm kind of influential, but I have some grandiose ideas of how we can utilize that space on top of just fundraising. There'll be lots of things that we can do for the city. And one of the things I'll just tell you, I just put a little seed in your, in your, in your mind here. One of the things that I'm thinking about doing is if we can get this thing developed, we're, you know, we currently have concerts on the lawn one, once a week or once a month during the summertime. If we get this developed, I want to do it so that we have a concert every week. Something, some entertainment there every week. And then the thing that we've talked about for years here in the City of Milton about having a farmer's market, we could tie that farmer's market to a weekly event every week all summer at the Gathering Place because we'll have the space to it. And if we did that, just think of just that one simple, this one simple programming activity that we did once a week. And it, and it gets publicized and advertised around Southern Wisconsin. Everybody knows that over in Milton, at 6:30 every Thursday night all summer long, they've got a, a farmer's market and some live entertainment. We're going to be drawing people from all over Southern Wisconsin to come to this because one, it's, it's Milton and people love to come to Milton. And two, it's going to be a beautiful space and why not? So anyway, we're excited about our future. We appreciate your support. And let's just hope we can whip this pandemic and move forward. And I'd love to answer any questions if you have anything about our appeal or what we do or where we stand on anything, I'd certainly answer it and I'd love to do that for you.
Dave, I can't remember. I know there was something in the Courier about some nonprofits in the community getting some of the Cares Relief Fund from, I think it was First Community Bank. Is that something that the Gathering Place was eligible to apply for? Or how did, I don't know how that works, but.
Yeah, we, we were eligible for the Pay, Payroll Protection Plan that, that the government, you know, subsidized nonprofits and such. And yeah, the Gathering Place, we applied for that grant. They allowed us to, you know, you could use it for salaries and, and utilities and so on and so forth. We applied for that grant and received the grant this year for $32,500 and that was enough to subsidize staffing for six weeks from the middle of April till sometime in May. So we did capitalize that and we were grateful to get that money because that really helped us in some of our deficits of our, you know, shortfall of budgets.
Okay, thanks. I wasn't, I wasn't sure how that worked.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions? Ryan, any questions or comments?
Nope, this time. It was a good presentation. Thank you.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No additional questions.
Larry, any questions or comments?
No, I'm, I'm excited for the potential of your expansion there, Dave. And I'm certainly grateful that we can help you in some fashion. I wish we could help you totally, but that's not possible. But we'll do the best we can.
Appreciate it.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
You know, I, just that I, you know, that I work with the Gathering Place as a representative from the City Council. And as I mentioned before, I think that the work with the Rock County Nutrition Program as representative from the community of Milton is a task that we greatly appreciate. And to ask them to do that for our community, to staff it and provide the support with the building and all that that entails is quite a, a service. And so as a community, I think we also need to recognize the expenses that come along with that. So we need to consider that.
Thank you, Teresa. Devon, any questions or comments?
Not at this time, no.
And Linda, any questions or comments?
Good to see you again, Dave.
Yes, Linda, nice to see you.
I did have a question. I know initially when you started your project that we were hoping that the, the first stage was going to pique a lot of interest in the community. And I was just wondering how that was going?
I, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't get the first part of what the, the first thing that the community did what? I'm, I'm sorry.
When we first, when we were first talking about your garden space, we thought that maybe once that first phase was in process, that there would be more people recognizing it and possibly more contributions coming in. And I was just wondering how that's coming.
I see. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. The answer to that is, is, is yes. You know, once we, once, once the, the property was cleared and the stumps were removed and then folks could kind of get a rough idea of it. And now starting that first phase with, with doing the, the walkways and the parking lot and planting some trees, it has generated some, some interest. However, you know, we really haven't, you know, during the pandemic, we, we had plans to visit with businesses and some, you know, friends of the Gathering Place and such. But we've really, really curtailed that until things churn around. We've, you know, we've met with some folks that were willing to meet, you know, individually. But we have, we have a strategy, once things open up, that we can reach out a little bit more to the community. Because I, I think, you know, I, I'm pretty optimistic that, you know, we, it's basically a three-phase product, project. The first phase is, is completing what we've got started here. The second phase is the, is the development of the pavilion, the ban shelf in, in our memorial garden area there. And then the, the third phase will be the concession stand in the restrooms. But once, I think, once they start doing the construction of that pavilion and folks get an idea of, of really what that layout is going to look like, I, I think it's a, I think people will be very forthcoming with support once, once they really see it. I mean, it's, it's really good. I'll tell you what, and I know you guys have been by it. It is, when we, when we opened that up, that two acres is, is pretty good size. I mean, I'm still amazed at how, how much space that really was there and it didn't appear that way when we started the project. It's, it's, it's really going to be a quite encompassing area.
And then the other thing that I just wanted to say, not only does the Gathering Place take care of our, our senior meals, but in doing those senior meals, they bring a lot of our community members out that normally would not come out. Most of the volunteers that come and deliver those meals are other seniors or other, sometimes a mom and a child, just other people in the community that are just out. They know that they, it's something they can do to be helpful. And this program is, is just totally incredible. I have had to use it in my home and you can't really say enough about it. But I don't want people to think that that's all that the Gathering Place is.
Oh, wow.
Because there are so many cool things that go on at the Gathering Place. It is, I consider the Gathering Place the Schilberg Park for the rest of us. Those of us that have gotten to a certain age and like to have fun, but maybe not running around a field or something. A lot of people use this and it is truly an asset in our community.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I just want to, you know, I'm sorry I'm taking so long. But a couple of other thoughts about the, the program, the Senior Nutrition Program is, is one, there's a lot of, the volunteers that come, come from some of our area churches and they, and they, they really support what we've got going here. It's outstanding, the fellowship that happens and it's, it's a wonderful thing. But another thing, and it goes along with the, the delivery of these meals to the seniors that are shut in, I will tell you that a lot of the folks that are shut-in seniors, these are folks that want to stay in their own homes and they're doing everything that they can to do that. This program helps them maintain their independence and not have to go to assisted living and such. But in a lot of cases, those visits that those, that those volunteers give those seniors may be the only outside social contact they have for that particular day. And, and through the course of the week, if they get meals every day, that's a vital communication piece to the outside world. Because, you know, since mid, mid-March, we've been confined. And, and, and we're, our population, especially the elderly, are so vulnerable. And I can speak for it because, you know, I, I know what, I know what, what takes place. That visit, that, that two-minute step in there and here's your meal, good to see you. There, the folks that are volunteering there are keeping an eye on things. If things don't look right, they'll come back and report that, that maybe we need to follow up. So it's, it's more than just a, a meal and it's more than just a delivery. It's, it's really a, a lifeline for a lot of those elderly that are homebound.
Thanks. Thanks, Linda. Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
And Council, we appreciate you spending time with us and doing your yearly presentation. And we will move on to the Milton House if everybody is good with that.
Thank you all.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Okay, bye now.
Thank you.
Bye.
You can stay if you want.
Thank you.
You don't have to. There's no pressure. We understand everybody's busy and probably tired today.
Okay, I appreciate that. Bye now. Good luck, everybody.
Keaton, you're up.
Alright, so I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Actually, first, can everybody hear me? Okay. So let me see if I can figure out this whole screen share situation. First. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, it's coming.
It's coming? Okay.
It, it's thinking about it.
There it comes.
There it goes.
So we don't have the greatest internet around here, so it could be part of the problem too. Alright, well, I will try and get through this as quickly as I can for you guys. I know you have a lot to talk about tonight. So first of all, thank you so much for taking the time to hear our presentation. For some of you, you may not know who I am yet. I'm a pretty new face around here. My name is Keaton. I'm the Executive Director at the Milton House. I just started in February, so it's been quite an experience to get my feet under me here while also trying to manage the organization through a pandemic. But we're still here and that's, that's a good thing. So today, I'm going to just kind of talk to you guys a little bit about how our 2020 has gone and how we've been able to utilize the funding that the Milton House, or that the Milton City Council does give us and then kind of what our hopes are for 2021 in relation to, you know, what we're hoping the city can support us with. So if you guys have any questions, if you want to ask them throughout the presentation, if you need me to go back to a slide, let me know. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions at the end as well. So I always like to kind of start with our mission because that's kind of our guiding force when we're trying to decide where we want the organization to go, what kind of events we want to do and stuff like that. So obviously, you know, the Milton Historical Society was formed in 1948 and we're here to preserve the cultural and historical heritage of Milton and its surrounding communities. And then probably the thing that people know us more for is of course, main And then probably the thing that people know us more for is of course maintaining the structure that is the actual Milton House and the tours that we operate out of that building. So making sure that that building is safe and it's sound and it's being taken care of and maintained and preservation of it is being done correctly is obviously a full-time, year-round, all-the-time job for the organization along with a lot of the other stuff that we do throughout the year. Kind of going with that, obviously we do give tours and that is something that, you know, like I said, that's kind of what we're known for. But we also are the archival resource for the community. So if you want to research your genealogy or learn about history of Milton sports, you can come here. We have a lot of in our archives and we do have a lot of community members, people from outside. Obviously not right now, but normally coming in to use those resources. We also have an extension 3D collection, 3D object collection. So that's your actual, you know, physical items that relate to Milton history. So a lot of those are on exhibit, a lot of those are in storage. This year, we're actually, because of the pandemic and being closed for a while, we were able to rotate a lot of objects in our exhibit spaces to have completely new exhibits in our lobby area, which was really fun for the summer staff to help work on. And it was just fun to get new items out and displayed. So, you know, we're, we're not just tours, we're also kind of your historic depository in town as well. Our role on the Underground Railroad, our history, the, the town, all of that is a very compelling story. And it is one that draws people not only from our backyard, but actually from across the Midwest, across the country and even across the world. So this is just a quick, a little snapshot of places that we have had visitors, visitors from. So we are an attraction. So talking a little bit about our special events. We have a lot of special events normally throughout the year. We have the two that people are probably most familiar with are obviously our Civil War Living History Days, which happened in May. And then in, in August, along with the chicken barbecue, we do the Arts and Crafts on the Lawn event. So as you look at the traditional events that we have throughout the year, you can see that the majority of them, of them this year had to be canceled due to COVID, you know, restrictions and precautions. So it was definitely difficult decisions to make every time, as I'm sure a lot of you have had to make decisions like this as well. And, but it's also given us an opportunity to kind of look at these events and how we can, you know, take this time when we have off to improve them, make them more accessible and kind of move forward with them and bring them back in 2021, hopefully in an even bigger and, and better format. We were able to hold our Twilight Tours this September and that was exciting. We actually sold those tours out along with having a waiting list of people, hoping that people who had bought tickets were gonna not show up. Our capacity was reduced because we couldn't combine groups. You had to be a single household on a tour. But we got really good feedback from that. A lot of people very excited to come back next year. So it was nice to be able to put that event on as well. And then in October, we actually were able to, we had planned three new events. We were able to execute two of them. One was a paranormal ghost walking tour around, kind of around Milton. They talked about Milton House, the Ezra Goodrich House, Goodrich Hall and Main Hall and some different activity, paranormal activity that's happened there. And that event sold out and same thing, we probably could have done another one, you know, and people calling for, for tickets. So that was fun and exciting. And then we also did that in a Zoom format and I think we had about 30 people attend that. And then a few people after emailed and asked like, can we have the recorded version of it? So people in Rock County, they love Halloween and they love these kind of events. And so we're hoping that we can turn October, instead of kind of going into a sleep mode, it can maybe potentially become one of our bigger months. And then we had hoped to do an event the end of October on Rachel Salisbury, who's a Milton member. But due to COVID, we ended up having to cancel that one, hoping to do it next year instead. And then going forward here, just within the last couple of weeks, we got word from the production company who puts on the Christmas Carol that they're going to have to cancel this year. So that's a big bummer as well, but that one's a little bit more outside of our, outside of our controls. And so they're the ones who do all the work on that one. So. And then we are looking in December to do some, hopefully some holiday tours, which we haven't done before. And also we have a wreath sponsorship program that's been really successful so far, where people can pay to get a wreath and then they decorate it and then they bring it back to us. We display it, we're going to display them in the museum. And then hopefully have some kind of online auction where people can actually bid on the wreaths and take them home. So that's a new project this year too. So we're excited about that one. Um, looking at our numbers, you know, 2015 to 2019, our numbers are looking pretty solid. And then you see the 2020 numbers and obviously there's a huge drastic cutoff. Most of our group tours, a lot of our schools, and literally the week that our school tour season was going to start is when we went into the mandatory stay-at-home and all the schools were canceled. So we essentially lost all of that revenue, all of those visitor ship out of the school tours, which was really, which was really sad for us. Drop-in tours, thankfully this summer, we were able to open for tours, but in unlimited capacity. Again, not being able to put, you know, 10 to 12 different people on a tour, having to kind of keep it down to one to two people, groups. And then just the fact that people weren't comfortable coming out just really reduced our numbers. But still had over a thousand visitors over the summer, which all things considered, I'm actually pretty happy with. And then our special event numbers, because our normal big numbers are from arts and crafts and, and civil war are way down, obviously. So I know our numbers are, you know, were a big draw for people and that's a, a big reason a lot of people, you know, the way we help benefit the city. And obviously we hope in 2021 and moving forward, we can get our numbers back to what they were, if not exceed them. But this year there was just so much obviously outside of our control in regards to that. Um, and just really quick, I won't spend a lot of time on this, this is just some economic impact. This is not Milton House specific, this is the Rock County. But you can see, you know, over the last three years, direct spending by visitors to Rock County has been steadily increasing. The business sales and tourism's been steadily increasing, state and local taxes have steadily been increasing. I'm really scared to see the 2020 numbers, to be honest. But again, hopefully that's a blip and we'll be able to pick up after that. But tourism in Rock County is a big draw. We're between Chicago and Madison, a lot of people come. You know, they're, they're in Chicago, they're heading north for the weekend, they type in their GPS, where can I stop? We're a halfway point to a stretch their life, we're right off the interstate. Where Rock County is very popular and with how Beloit is expanding and Janesville is expanding. You know, we're, we're posed to rise, to ride that wave too. And it's, it's really, really exciting. So hopefully these numbers again will continue to, to go up. So. Without talking about, you know, the lost revenue that we have. These numbers, just so you guys know, is basically looking at what we made over the certain time period last year compared to this year. And this is the difference. So if 2020 was a normal year, maybe we would have made more, maybe we would have made less. But these are just kind of an estimate. But between our big things like school tours, summer tours, Civil War days, arts and crafts, Christmas Carol gift shop sales, total room rentals, we're down about $30,000, $33,000 compared to where we were this time in 2019. So obviously those numbers can be quite intimidating and quite scary. And it's something that, you know, we've been actively working on throughout the year to try and offset those losses as best we, as best we can. So COVID relief this year, thankfully there's been a lot of help from the federal level, the, the state level, and then just even the community level when it comes to offsetting those losses. So I know Vanessa, you had asked Dave about the PPP, which is the Payroll Protection Program. We also were eligible for that and we got what we requested. So that really helped cover our payroll through the beginning of the summer, which was very, very helpful. We also then were able to do a grant, asked to the Wisconsin Humanities Council for a grant that they offered to help cover payroll expenses. And that ran for August, September and October. And thankfully we were one of the grantees of that and they granted us our full request of $7,500. And then I think it was like in April, we put out a letter campaign just to members, businesses, the community saying, hey, we're in the shutdown, you know, we're losing the revenue that we depend on to, to operate. If, if you're able, can you help us out at all? And we were pleasantly surprised that we raised about $10,000 with, with that campaign. And then we've also done some Facebook fundraisers. Of course, Community Bank gave us a little bit of money as well. And so thankfully we've been almost able to basically offset our losses based on this kind of funding that's come in, as I'm calling them, non-traditional sources. Cause I don't expect them to, you know, be there moving forward, unfortunately. Income and expenses really quick again. 2018 numbers are so big because we did a big push to get enough funding to restore the outside of the building, the exterior. So we had to fundraise that and then also spend that money. We've been able to reduce expenses because we haven't had to have the lights on as much. And we've been able to cut back staff when it comes to summer a little bit. So pretty nice to see that at least our expenses, although they are outpacing our income, it's not a drastic drop at the moment. So for 2020 to break even essentially is something that we're working hard to do. Hopefully we'll be able to make a little more to help put us in a better financial for the 2021 year, which is probably going to be a difficult financial year as well. We did also do some improvements yet on the site. It's important to kind of keep people aware that we're still here, we're still active, we're still looking towards the future. So this, the new pedestrian bridge on our grounds actually just got completed within the last couple of weeks. We were able to utilize some students from the Milton High School in one of the shop classes to do this project. And thankfully they literally wrapped it up the week before the high school went into a virtual format. So they were able to complete that and it's been fantastic. The old bridge was falling apart. It, we almost couldn't even have guests use it because it was almost too dangerous. So this new one's made out of composite material, so it's going to be durable, it's going to be here for a long time. We added the railings to it, we widened it. So it's going to be a great asset for people to be able to get around our, our site. And then we're continuing to update our exhibits within the museum from a grant that we actually received last year in 2019. It should have been wrapped up in May, but because of COVID, we're still in the process. But hopefully we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. But basically this is one of the first major exhibit, exhibit updates in almost 20 years to the museum. We're shifting our narrative a little bit more towards the Underground Railroad side of things. And so this was a National Park Service grant that we got as a Network to Freedom site to better tell the story of our Underground Railroad history. So that's been fun to, to work on and to see come to life. So hopefully next year for the tour season, it'll be all done and it'll give people a reason to come back because it'll all be brand new. We've also been in the media, which is a good thing, in a good way, in a good way. 2019 National Geographic actually films part of an episode here for Drain America's Last Slave Ship and that premiered in February. So that was exciting. We had a volunteer who wrote an article and submitted it to Alice Obscura about us. So that was, that was good. That was in May. Tribal Wisconsin was really promoting us this summer as a safe place to go and visit if you were looking for things to do. So that was cool. And then in September of 2020, Governor Evers declared September International Underground Railroad Month in Wisconsin. And hopefully moving into 2021, we'll be working with partners like the Black Holocaust Museum in Milwaukee, the State Historical Society and the Department of Tourism to promote Underground Railroad sites and civil war, or civil rights sites around the state. So hopefully that's going to get us a little bit of a, a push to, for people to see us and want to come see us in, in 2021. So those are all exciting. The other thing I just wanted to touch on really quick, and this is kind of leaning towards 2021 and what we're hoping to accomplish is obviously there's been a lot of, a lot more light focused on civil rights and social justice and all of, all that comes with that and all that our country continues to struggle with, with that. And obviously this is my first year here, so I have the experience of a normal year. But I do feel that given what's been happening, the history of the Milton House has never been more important. We are extremely relevant today and we can see that. Because according to a lot of my summer staff, we saw more black people coming to our site in the first couple of weeks of summer than we normally see in an entire tour season. And they were calling and asking to come. And so we had a much more diverse visitor ship, which was very exciting and something that we hope, a trend we hope to see continue. And partnering with places like the Black Holocaust Museum in, in Milwaukee and things like that will hopefully only increase that visitor ship. And hopefully it'll get to a point where, you know, staff and board of us, of the museum even have more diversity than we have now. We also have organizations reaching out to us, asking us to help them figure out ways to teach civil rights, to teach about the Underground Railroad in schools and education. Sometimes that topic can be one that can spiral a lot of control really quickly. And so sometimes educators almost kind of don't want to deal with it because they're just not sure what to do. So one example would be that in February in 2021, the Black History Education Conference was planning to come here as part of their conference and now it's going to be virtual. So I've been working with the director of that, along with PBS, to figure out how we can figure out a virtual experience for that conference that still allows them to interact with our site and experience our site in a impactful way, even though they can't come and see us physically. So that's been a very, that's been a very exciting project to work on. And then just last week, I had a meeting, a phone call meeting with Microsoft and their education department. And they're selecting about 10 sites around the country that they're going to highlight in the month of February with Black History. And so we're one of those sites that they've selected. And so we're going to essentially potentially have the power of Microsoft come and help do a virtual 360 tour of us. They might, they have influencers like NFL players, NBA players, music artists, who they might have come and do a tour that they can utilize. And then we also started discussions about working with them to potentially put on some kind of summer camps, utilizing their platform over the summer to continue to get people to learn about our history, even outside of Black History Month. So even though there are some days where it feels kind of pointless to be here because it feels kind of like, what, everything just gets canceled, like no one knows we're here, what's, what's the point? You have these kind of conversations with people and it's really exciting to see how important we are and the potential we have to make a difference and to give people to see us and conversely then get to see the community of Milton. Because our, our story is tied so closely to Milton community that it's, it's a really cool, I don't know, I'm losing words right now. It's really cool. I'll end at that. But this is definitely something that we want to continue to be on the forefront if we, if we possibly can. So. Same thing, like we want to continue to figure out better ways that people can access us on a digital platform. So if schools can't come to us in the spring, is there a way we can have a virtual option for teachers? Is there a way we can work with educators to develop, you know, curriculum that relates to the Underground Railroad that they can use? So we want to do that. Obviously, technology allows us to increase our footprint. You know, maybe someone in California sees one of our Zoom things and they jump on and they, they're, they think we're really cool. And so they start supporting us. And then maybe there's someone who normally wouldn't come see us, but they saw our virtual tour. And so when things open up again, they, they make a point to come and see us. So hopefully it'll really increase our, our reach. Because our story really is one that's unique around the country. We have, it's not just unique to Wisconsin, it's, it's unique nationally and we need to be utilizing that. And then the other project that we've been talking about is kind of if any of you did the Mammoth Hike Challenge, I know Ingo will be familiar with the Strive On app. But utilizing the Strive On app to put things around town that people can, oh, this is the Goodrich plot in the cemetery, how do I find more about the Goodrich family? Oh, I should go to the Milton House. And then when you're at the Milton House, we could say, oh, you should also go, you know, if you want to see more, you know, Grouse buildings for, that Joseph did, you should go to these different places. Or you can use these apps to direct people all around town and help them better engage with the history that's all around town, not just here. So they come to the Milton House for the history and then we say, you know what, you really should stay. There's tons of history in town, we have great shops, great restaurants, you know, beautiful parks. You should just hang out here for a while too. And so hopefully we can use our technology and our expanded reach to help get more people to realize what a gem of a community Milton actually is. So where does the city come in? All that is basically the funds that you guys graciously have given us over the last few years. We've used to fund our summer staff. So here's some of the summer staff that we had this year. Other college students, high school students, local, a lot of them have been here since they were like me high. And they are here six days a week in the summer. They're the face of the organization, sometimes the only people that our visitors interact with. They're passionate, they're exciting, they have great ideas, they're up for anything. They're a big asset to us because I'm the only full-time staff member. I have a part-time office manager, but we definitely could not handle the volume of, of traffic that comes in during the summer. And if our reach continues to go out and we continue to get the exposure that we're hoping, those visitor numbers are only going to go through the roof and we're only going to need more help. And we've even seen this year that we actually, you know, we very much could be open for tours longer than just the summer. So if there'd be a way to increase the funding so that, you know, we're able to offer tours later into the year, that would be really fantastic. And then typically you also help, we use some of that money as well for marketing. And then typically, you also help, we use some of that money as well for marketing. So our numbers this year are low because we basically stopped doing marketing in March to an extent, we didn't have any events, and we did have less summer staff, and we had less hours for them just because of everything that was going on. But it's very important with that, that money that the city is able to give us to help us fund this important role that we need to basically fulfill our mission. So basically, I just want to say, you know, you guys, thank you so much for the support you've given us over the years, kind of what Dave said. We completely understand the financial situation that you guys are in, going to be in, and so, and we appreciate any help that you can give us, the support that I've received from the community, from the city, from city council members just over the past, you know, six months, even just check-ins and stuff like that, it's been amazing, too. It's been really cool to be part of this and see how, how much this community just jives together, how everybody wants everybody else to succeed. And it's, it's nice to not be in a cutthroat situation where you feel like you have to, you know, turn on someone in order to save your own organization. And I think, you know, the city is very instrumental in making sure that that community feeling continues. So thank you for your time, thank you for all of your help, and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for that thorough presentation, and lots of exciting new things coming up in 2020, so we look forward to that. And I'll just go around again. Bill, any questions or comments?
No additional questions, just wish we could do more.
Larry?
Just one comment, I think it's really exciting about the virtual tour idea, especially the Underground Railroad part of your facilities, because a lot of people like myself who are in wheelchairs or walkers can't get down and they actually experience that, walk, and what went on. So I think that's really going to be a positive.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're unmuted.
You did.
Just to reiterate what Larry had said, I like the idea of the virtual tours, thought that was great.
Thanks, Teresa. Devin?
I don't have anything, it was a great presentation, though.
Linda?
Yes, that was a great presentation, and thank you, Keaton. This is a real challenging year for you, too. I, even though you have had this challenging year, it sounds like you're just taking what you have and just going with it, and that's so exciting, and, and, and I hope that we can do more to help.
Thanks, Linda. Ryan?
Much agree with everything that was said, that was a good, very, very good presentation.
Okay, anything else for anyone?
I'm going to just add one quick thing, going back to what Larry said, too. And that is something with the virtual experiences, it's kind of COVID has just kind of pushed that to the forefront and made it much more of an important thing, but it is something that we would, you know, we want to have going forward for people. And we've also talked about, you know, people who are mobily, you know, have mobile issues or people who have hearing issues or sight issues, all of that. And we've even talked about using technology to somehow maybe make, you know, our labels or our tours into other languages so that people who come here have that opportunity. So a goal, a big goal of mine when I was hired was to just increase the accessibility of the museum all around. So COVID, in a weird, weird way, has actually helped that a little bit. So I, I'm excited for that. So I'm done now.
Thank you, and thanks for the follow-up. And you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, too, as we move on to talk about our budget. That is our next item, discussion, direction, and possible action regarding the 2021 City of Milton annual budget, and we have some, well, handouts or however we describe them virtually. And Al?
Yep, I'm going to queue it up here, just a second. I think I can share my screen, yep. So can everybody see that kind of budget presentation up there now?
We can.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so this is a much more truncated version than what we saw two weeks ago, and really, it's just kind of an update with information that has changed since the last time we talked two weeks ago, which now feels like two months ago, but it was only two weeks ago, so. So we won't have to go through all of the nitty-gritty of it, so you're welcome, Keaton, if she's still here. But again, just kind of wanted to start with the highlights. Again, same thing is said, the City of Milton will collect less taxes in 2021 than it did in 2020. Our expenses will only increase 1.15%. This is down from the 1.56% number that we previously showed, and that number will likely increase or decrease again by the time we adopt the budget because, again, we do need to qualify for levy limits. So this shows the expenditure increase. We increased 2.73% in the current budget year, and next year, we only plan to increase 1.15% based on the budget that's, based on where we're at in the current budget process. So what does this mean? We will still levy to the max, we still don't qualify for the imposed levy limit cap, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. As you may recall, last time we met, we needed to cut $12,543 or $34. We've gotten that gap down to $7,899. So that's still the remaining piece that needs to be cut from this budget. So it's a small amount and one that we're confident we will reach, but I wanted to make you, make everybody aware that we're still working on it. Again, we'll collect less taxes in 2021 than 2020. I think that's an important piece to note. I don't like the saying, "We'll be doing more with less," but in essence, that's exactly what we're going to do in 2021. Expenditures will only increase 1.15%. There is no reduction in service, no new levy-supported borrowing, and we are still on par for all employees to receive the same compensation increase. And we still have in the budget as of right now, maintaining capital infrastructure funding as we did last year. As we talked about at great length last time, the big unknown that we have still, the big unknown, is the fire commission allocation with all of the discussions that have been taking place with the surrounding townships and the fire commission. We do have in the budget our, our increase of $24,989 for a total contribution of $416,000. But what we don't know is where the other surrounding townships fall. We do know that Harmony will be holding their referendum discussion next week, Monday, I believe, if, and Dan can correct me if I'm wrong. And we do know that the surrounding contracted townships are all having discussions, but we don't have any official word yet on, on any of their positions. Did I hear somebody jump in? Was that Dan?
No, I was disagreeing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So again, here's, here is where we are at. We still need to cut $7,899. So this number here, the 3.4 million, will reduce, will need to be reduced by $7,899. The number that was published in the Courier this, this last week was, was the number that was previously here, and that, so that was technically incorrect. What we will be levying is this number minus this number. So going back a few slides. Sorry, too many, too many fancy. This is what we will be levying. So the Courier had that incorrect, and I want to make sure that people understand that, that, again, that's why we will be levying less dollars in 2021 than we did in 2020, where that's the slide that I was previously on. Sorry for giving anybody kind of a whiplash. This is where we are currently at, and we need to reduce by $7,899. That's why I bolded that, started it, and made it a bigger font. We just talked about the nonprofits, and again, in the budget, we have $10,000 for each, which is level funding, and we still do need to cut the $7,899. Sorry, I've got somebody who's eavesdropping. Again, the budget unknowns, Fire Department is the big one. That is the big unknown at this time, and hopefully, we'll know what that answer is by the next time we meet on November 17th. So we do know that we need to reduce by $7,899, and what we are currently looking at are these four categories that we discussed at the last meeting. Again, it's important to note that any reduction in these numbers will result likely in a reduction in perpetuity. So we're looking to grab that $7,899 from one of these categories. Again, bears repeating, we'll be collecting less money next year than we did this year. Maintain current service levels, compensation for all employees will be level, no percentage change in insurance premiums. Our insurance premiums increased, but the amount that employees contribute on a percentage basis will remain the same. We maintain capital infrastructure funding levels at this time. General fund expenditures only increase by 1.15% with the current budget that's, that you just saw this evening. And we do need to qualify for levy limits still at this time. And we still have that kind of albatross around our neck of 23, 23 cents of every tax dollar being collected goes to debt service. So once we get that number down even further, we will see our corresponding tax rate decline as well. So here we are in the process. Our public hearing is November 17th, and we're still slated to approve the budget on December 1st. This has already been scheduled, and we don't see any reason whatsoever why we won't be able to meet this December 1st date at this time. Obviously, if things change with the Fire Department, that just means that we have more work to do in the budget process and what we need to cut. But at the end of the day, we have to have a balanced budget, and we are shooting for December 1st to have that information out there.
Larry, you're muted.
Thank you, man. I apologize. I do have a question. Al, you showed those categories, and you said that approximately, let's say we take 1,000 out of one of those categories, or a combination of them, let's say.
Right.
And you said that it might be perpetuity.
Yep.
That's assuming everything stays the way it is, right? In other words, is it possible that we can recoup those funds in a, in a later year?
Well, it's, it's all, it's also possible. The reason I put that in there is because we know, or we're, we're very certain based on what the legislature has said in Madison and out of the governor's office, that the cuts that the state will likely impose to state aid, shared revenue, road aid, and things of that nature will be part of their next biennial budget. So next year at this time, when we're preparing our 2022 budget, it's very likely that we will see a, a, a pretty noticeable reduction in state aid. So any reduction we make this year, it's going to be hard to recoup next year. And, you know, when those dollars will come back from the state, if they ever come back from the state, you know, certainly, we can recoup it then, but I just want folks to know that it's, it's very likely that, that next year, we'll be seeing even more cuts.
Bill, anything?
No questions.
Teresa?
Well, you know, I guess just to ask about the requests that we received tonight, I mean, what are the chances of dealing with those requests beyond the $10,000 each?
Well, I think that's ultimately the council's decision.
Well, what, I guess my question is, what, what impact does that have on the budget? Where does that money come from, say, if we went to $15,000 each?
Yeah, I mean, we, we still have to cut about $8,000 from the budget, so if we were going to add $5,000 to each one of those, we would need to cut about $19,000 from the budget. Where that would come from, we would ask the council. Because, you know, in my opinion, that's a policy decision. That, that, you know, that's not an operational decision, that's a policy decision that the council would need to make. So I would go back to those four categories of, that we previously put up there, of capital, contingency, other operational expenses, or, or other. Again, with that caveat that any reduction there likely doesn't return in, in the near future, so. I know that doesn't, I know that doesn't answer your question, but I think, in my opinion, I think that's a policy decision for the council to make.
Are there any savings that we might still incorporate into this budget? I know that we've done some different personnel changes, and I'm wondering if any, if there's anything that's not in here that we might see in the near future or by the end of the year in, in that area?
Um, I'm not exactly sure if I understand the question. I think, you know, is there an opportunity for turnover savings? I mean, I think that that opportunity always exists if there are individuals who leave and they're replaced at a lower wage rate. We do have a vacancy in the Public Works Department right now. If that position is filled at a lower wage rate than what was previously provided to the, to the, the past employee, there would be savings recognized there, yes.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just wondering if there are, because this is such a unique year in looking at it, when we look at COVID and the issues that those two organizations face, you know, to me, it's, it's an exceptional request from both organizations. It's not something that, oh, okay, now they're all wanting $15,000 a year. It just, and, and I would preface that by saying that to both organizations. But, you know, if there was a way to find that money by looking back at those areas in the budget and see if there's any way to tweak it, to try to come up with anything.
I think another
What?
I think another option that we could look at is, as the year shakes out for us like it does every January, February, we can look to see what kind of variance we have from revenues and expenses, knowing that, you know, we're going to collect, we're going to be reimbursed for a lot of COVID-related expenses that we've incurred as a city, and that there's certain expenses that weren't realized that were budgeted for in 2020. If there was an additional appropriation that the council wanted to do with any kind of residual funds out of 2020, could utilize some of that to not have it necessarily be a part of the 2021 formal budget process, but as a, as a supplemental appropriation to those two organizations four months from now, or three months from now.
Yeah, so it would have to be a wait-and-see approach for those organizations. I mean, that's actually what staff proposed a couple of years ago, is that we, that, that those organizations should be removed from the budget process altogether, and then as the city does well, we can share in those benefits. The Council Policy Ad-Hoc Committee didn't agree with that approach because it creates uncertainty in the Milton House and in Gathering Places annual budget process, and I understand that, but that is, you know, that's always an option available to us.
Well, I, I guess I would, I mean, I would be uncomfortable, as I was before, of excluding them completely, but if, to give them a flat $10,000 that they could rely upon in their budget and then float the, the additional $5,000 as a, you know, a possibility that we could honor that, assuming that our budget runs. that we could honor that, assuming that our budget runs as expected.
Yep. Yep, that certainly, we did that last year with the Tourism Consortium. We came back in February and allocated an additional $1,000. We could do the same thing with these entities, assuming that, you know, everything shakes out well with the budget, which we assume it will. So, I think that's, I think that's an excellent compromise, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that, Dan.
Yeah, and then it's not what we call in the finance world base building on the budget, too.
Linda, anything?
Yes, actually, I agree with what Teresa is saying. I would love to just give these, each of these organizations 15, just because this has been such an extraordinary year. Dan, my question is, I know that there's a preference of the percentage of our budget that we need to have in contingency. Can you tell us what that is?
Yeah, right now in the budget for 2020 and 2021, we have 50,000. And some of that is just derived from the, our liability coverage, our self-insured retention. Essentially, that's two large claims that, you know, could happen, we hope don't happen, usually doesn't happen. That's kind of where that has been derived from in past years. I believe it was 2019, that might have been, or 2018, that might have been 70,000. But generally, we've tried to keep it at least the floor at 50,000 for that very reason, covering our self-insured retention in the unforeseen situation of some sort of large litigation. And/or, if the, when we build the budget for Public Works and for police and things of that nature, we try to use a rolling three-to-five-year average for snow events and such. And so, if we have an anomaly, we don't want to necessarily budget every year as if we're going to have like 30 snow events. Because it's very rare we have 30 snow events. We try to budget on what we historically have spent, then taking into account any kind of inflation contract increases that we're aware of. And so, that contingency also helps with some of the ebbs and flows of Wisconsin weather. And we've also had to dip into it a few times for technology things and/or if we have higher-than-usual turnover because we don't budget our personnel onboarding-type expenses for physicals and pre-employment things, advertising, that sort of thing, as if we're going to have seven new employees every year. We try to do that stuff on an average, knowing that we have contingency to help cover anomalies. And then, in the years where we spend under that average, then that's part of the annual discussion that we have with any situations where revenues might exceed expenses. And then, the whole capital discussion where we look at what was left off of the current year's capital list and all that good stuff.
So, where did Fire Department numbers come from on this? Is that the numbers, is that the numbers that, with the townships onboard, or is that the numbers without?
That's the number that was approved by the Fire Commission.
Okay, all right.
And the only thing it doesn't include is any kind of capital allocation. I know there was talk late in that meeting, a month ago, or whatever it was, of the need for an ambulance replacement. That is not included anywhere on any of this. Because there's all sorts of questions as to what percentage would we fund, who's going to fund what, et cetera.
Okay.
And is it really necessary at this point in time? Because that conversation hasn't really been had yet.
All right. I had some questions about your budget history sheet. Do you want me to ask those now, Anisa, or would you prefer to keep going around?
Um...
Part of this discussion?
Yeah, I think it is part of this discussion. Can we just, like, let everybody have a comment, and then we'll come back? Because maybe someone else has that same question.
Sure.
Okay, where am I at? Ryan?
I don't really have any other comments. I liked what Dan was suggesting and Teresa was discussing as well earlier. But maybe using some leftover allocations to help with both organizations. It sounds like the Milton House is going to be trying to do a lot of virtual stuff, but they also have a pretty bad internet. So, assistance, you know, might be helpful, too.
Devin?
I have no comments.
Hey, I got to everybody, right? I'm trying to do it by squares, so as long as you all don't move will be good. So, don't anybody make any changes to their screen. Linda, you had a follow-up question?
Yes, I do. Assessor, the assessor fee?
Yep.
From '20 to '21? It just seems to me like that's quite a bit of an increase. And I was just wondering if we are doing, if we are paying a certain amount each year or if we're just paying based on that year's work?
We have a contract with the assessor. And what that number reflects is because we did not do the revaluation this year, as we had originally planned, that number in 2021 reflects the cost to do the revaluation next year instead.
And so, is that in addition to what he would have done this year? So, there's more next year, or is it the same amount?
Paul incurred half the costs associated with the revaluation this year. And if you remember, I think it was back in April or May, we brought forth the concept of hitting the pause on the revaluation. And Paul agreed that, you know, he had some work into it. And he said, "If you guys want to do a revaluation either in '21 or '22, it would just be an additional $12,000 to the existing contract." So, what we've paid him this year is for the maintenance plus the cost for, would have been, I think, $8,000 or $10,000 of costs that he incurred while he started the revaluation, but prior to doing anything with those numbers. So, and he gave us the option if we wanted to spread out those costs over a two-year period. And the thinking of including the entire cost in the 2021 budget was, that's $22,000 in expenses, and if we incurred in 2021, it'll just kind of fall off the books in 2022 and beyond.
Okay.
So, then the contract will just go down to the $18,000 plus the assessment charge that the state provides us for doing the manufacturing assessments each year.
Okay.
So, instead of being like $46,000 in 2022, it'll be somewhere in that, like, $20,000 to $21,000 range.
Okay. And then, the other one was in public safety, the code enforcement. It's, there's, I'm looking at percentages here. Do we have a lot of more increases where we have code violations? Or do you think that maybe we don't have to plan on those increases? That people are figuring out that, hey, you know, we need to check with code enforcement and see if you can actually do this?
A lot of that's just labor-driven, Linda. So, that's just allocation of time based on a three-year average. So, if it's not in that category, it's just going to go somewhere else in the general fund. So, that's what you're seeing there.
Yeah, so what Dan's saying is with the wages that are, that are, the vast majority of that $5,000 increase is wages increases to those individuals who execute the code enforcement. So, it's not as though the cost of code enforcement is going up or we're predicting or projecting more code enforcement in 2021. It's wage-driven.
Okay. That was all on my questions. Thank you. It looks good.
And as we move, progress through the next few weeks, I mean, these are policy decisions. Like, if you, you know, look at other areas of the budget, ask questions. It's, you know, the council can make decisions on the budget. That's what you're elected to do, is to have, to make policy decisions. So, if there's other areas you have questions about, or you're, you know, you're wanting to look at having some more efficiencies, then, you know, look at those areas and have some conversations. Send some emails if you have some questions. And, you know, you can keep digging into this budget. This is a budget that you're going to be asked to approve. So, you know, don't be shy about, you know, doing your, you know, it's really the council's work to do this. It's not the staff's job to do policy decisions.
And if there's any detail any of you want to see, you know, like, I was able to answer Linda's question real easy because I have it organized very well. If any of you would like the Excel document with all the gory detail, I would be happy to send it to you, or if you want to just, you know, do a Zoom call or stop in and we can put it on the TV screen in the conference room or in the council chamber sometime. And I'd be happy to walk through anything or everything with any of you.
If there isn't anything further, we don't need any action tonight, correct, on anything? So, you have more time to think about stuff?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we've done in the past, because, you know, staff's role is to create an operational budget. We have done that, brought the budget forward. So, if there are changes that the council would like to see in the budget, you know, at this point, those changes would be policy decisions. So, if there's an increase that's requested, there would need to be a corresponding decrease. And that's where the policy question comes into play. I mean, that's really how local government is constructed.
And, you know, remember that we just got done with our strategic plan. It's very values-driven. We have goals, we have objectives, we have measurements. So, if you're maybe struggling with a particular category, go back to our strategic plan and see if what, the money that we're funding in different categories matches the strategy and the goals that you all said that you wanted to work towards, right? That's what it's there for. All right, so we'll just move on. And we're going to go to discussion and possible action regarding funding of the Putman Parkway land acquisition.
So, this is an item we've discussed the last couple of meetings that the city council approved last meeting to execute the offer to purchase for the land along Putman Parkway. And what this memo does is outline the funding mechanism and funding sources on how that acquisition will be funded. And as we talked about, it is our goal and our intent to have that acquisition be funded through non-levy-supported revenue sources. And what I mean by that is basically I mean TIF. So, we wouldn't be borrowing for it, and we wouldn't be using general fund tax levy. So, it's probably easier if I just kick it over to Dan, and then he can walk through any pieces of it.
Okay. Can you all, I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at the memo that I kind of outlined. Inga, do you want to do a share screen? And then I can just walk through the memo with people.
Do you have it? You're able to share your screen?
Oh, I can?
Yep, yep.
Brady Bunch, there we go. Can you all see it? The memo? Okay. So, what I've tried to do, knowing that we would have to borrow the $1.65 million for the land acquisition, I wanted to outline all of the city's general obligation debt that we currently have and that, along with what the proposed amount here looks like. And it brings us to about $11.2 million in general obligation debt. Then I believe the next item on the agenda is talking about a method to pay off the TID 10 portion of the debt. So, assuming the council and you guys decide to do that, that would bring our outstanding debt at the end of this year, which includes this new debt, to just a hair over $10 million. Our legal debt limit is just under $23 million, leaving about just under $13 million of debt capacity, bringing our margin of general obligation indebtedness to below 50%. And the earliest financial statements I could find anywhere were 2002, and we were above 50%. So, that would lead me to believe this would be the first time in this century that we are below that 50% margin of indebtedness at the end of the year. So, that's really exciting because that actually puts us in compliance with our, with the debt policy. So, here is just an outline of the, of kind of the approval process to make all this happen. We're introducing the financing contingency that was part of the land acquisition contract or offer to purchase that was authorized two weeks ago. And we're talking about the borrowing. In the next month or so, we'll work with First Community and Bank of Milton to draft a resolution and bank note for their approval. We will bring forth those, that resolution and bank notes for council approval at one of the two scheduled December meetings with the goal of closing on the loan on December 31st. So, it's reflected in our year-end financial statements. The city would make its first interest payment on August 1st of 2021. And this is the only typo in the memo. And the first principal payment would be in February of 2022. And as Al alluded to earlier, the repayments would come from tax increment generated in TID 9 and then a new TID, TID 11. And then, just tying this back to the strategic plan and the council policy, that this, as I said earlier, it does not exceed 50% of the legal debt limit as outlined in the debt policy that the council passed a couple of years back. And it does not alter the objective of becoming a debt-free community on levy-supported debt, because this wouldn't be levy-supported debt. So, it keeps us on target for that 2026, 2027 timeframe. And we are looking for council approval to have us continue to work with First Community and Bank of Milton on the issuance of two $825,000 notes at 2.25%. So, with that, I'll take any questions?
The other comment I wanted to make is when we look at the strategic plan and economic development, this fits into that portion of the strategic plan. And I don't know that we tied that in on this memo, but expanding our commercial and industrial development. All the squares moved when Dan closed his document out on the east side. all the squares moved when Dan closed, uh, closed his document out, um, uh, in our, um, on the east side. So, um, I'm gonna go for Devon. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Ryan, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Linda?
No, very clear. Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Teresa?
Nope, looks great.
Larry?
Just one quick one. Dan, does this affect our bond ratings at all, even on a temporary basis?
We're not doing a rating, so.
Okay. I mean, it does, the financial transaction themselves doesn't impact.
I mean, we'll report it. Um, the only, the only time Moody's or S and P would actually do a bond rating is when you pay them money. And since I'm, since we're not paying them the $13,000, we aren't seeking a bond rating. We did, um, we did get a price or rate quote, I guess, if you will, for what a rated issue would cost. And the rate that, um, First Community and Bank of Milton offered was just as comparable with more favorable terms than if we were to try to lock ourselves into something that we couldn't necessarily prepay for several years and incur close to $70,000 in issuance costs.
I figured too, but I just saw it last.
Yep. No, good question.
Bill?
No questions. Exciting to see this moving forward.
Okay, is there a motion then?
I would.
I make a motion that the city staff work with First Community Bank and the Bank of Milton for the issuance of separate bank notes in the amount of 825,000 with an interest rate of 2.25%.
Second.
Okay, Linda moved it and Bill seconded it. Oh, there you are. Enga, did you get that?
I did. Thanks.
Um, any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Uh, our next part is, um, discussion and possible action on Resolution 202027, authorizing $900,000 in advances to TID number 10.
So I'll do another share screen. There goes the Brady Bunch, uh, squares again. So this memo is set up very similar to, um, the last one in terms of just illustrating kind of where we are with GEO debt. But the main difference being, um, since the, since March, as most of you probably know, the investment opportunities that are available for, uh, local governments, they're still available, but the rates are clearly not favorable. And I have made the decision at this juncture to not lock in any cash as some of these CDs and things mature. Just to provide additional liquidity. So another opportunities might present themselves that are more favorable than getting 15 or 20 extra basis points for three or four years. So the debt service that was taken out a year ago, or two years ago now, for the lift station work out in, uh, on Parkview, that was borrowed money. And one of the, um, funding mechanisms was if, if, uh, development stalled or, or or didn't materialize the way we had projected, um, TID 9 would, would help cover it. Because TID 9 is allowed to be a donor district that's out in the industrial park to the, to TID 10, which is the Parkview Drive corridor. And, uh, the general fund is sitting on some cash that would normally be invested in two, three, four-year CDs. And similar with the, uh, water and sewer funds. And since that opportunity does not make sense at this point, I thought, well, what if we were to advance from those various funds, $900,000 to the TID district? The TID district would pay back, um, those funds over a four-and-a-half-year period and save, save close to $110,000 in interest. And the water sewer and general fund could, uh, obtain a interest rate that is significantly more favorable than what could be obtained in the marketplace right now. So this proposal would pay off using existing ca- cash that's in the bank for, in TID 10, along with these advances, the following repayment schedule of TID 10 repaying those various funds. Essentially a repayment schedule that those funds are listed there. And then I tried my best to illustrate what this means with, uh, existing cash on hand for both the water and sewer funds and the general fund. And I don't foresee this being any issue, partially because our financial statements aren't being, aren't planned, um, to be used for any kind of public borrowing, because as we alluded to in the budget presentation, we still have an elevated debt service level. And a lot of these funds are going to be repaid fairly quickly, including an advance that was approved a couple of months ago, um, from the general fund. And I've talked this over with our city engineer, Mark Langer. We don't see any, um, issues in the short term or in the near short term, meaning the next three to four years of advancing these funds, considering they'll be repaid. And so I put together a resolution that would authorize the advance of 900,000 to TID 10. And then at the next council meeting, we would bring forth a resolution authorizing the payoff of that 1.22 million dollar bond, which would happen in mid, which would happen in mid-December. So with that, I'll take any questions? I'll leave the memo up, so if you need me to reference something.
Okay, um, Bill, any questions or comments?
No, very clear. Thank you.
Larry?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Teresa?
No, looks great.
Linda?
No, I, no questions. Very good.
Devon?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions, just more of Dan's wizardry, it seems. And skill.
Yes.
Want to help us out?
Okay. Is there a motion? Linda?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2027, authorizing 900,000 in advances to TID number 10.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Um, have we done this in the, the past, Dan, where these other funds have, we've, we've used other funding sources?
I don't think we've done anything for like this long of a period. Um, like I said, back in September, we're doing a four-month advance to TID 6, because we paid off that Black Heart Credit Union note. And, and TID 6 will pay it back on January 2nd. We've done more short-term things. We haven't done these longer, more full-blown kind of repayment schedules internally. But the Federal Reserve has given no indication that this rate environment is going to change anytime soon, so it seems like a win-win for all, for everyone involved.
The closest thing I can think to, think, uh, to this is, is the library project, which, you know, the, the general fund kind of forwarded cash to the library to fill that gap, and then the library repays the general fund. That's the closest example I can think of. That's not a utility, uh, related funding, but it's, it's, it's the same concept.
Okay.
We just did that one without interest attached.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Okay. Moving right along. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of conditional use permit submitted by Catch the Wave Swim Club for construction of a swimming facility with a caretaker residence at the southwest corner of East High Street and Gateway Drive.
So as, as memo indicates, Catch the Wave Swim Club is a private indoor swim facility that is looking to construct their recreational facility here in the city of Milton. Uh, in addition to that facility, they want to have an attached caretaker facility in which the owners of the project would reside. That is allowable, that, that type of, uh, caretaker facility is an allowable, uh, use, uh, conditional use, uh, through the M2 Zone District. So that's why, uh, this separate request, uh, needs to come before the Plan Commission and the council. The Plan Commission approved their site plan, which I have attached to the memo for your, uh, so you can kind of see what they plan to do. In ordinance, uh, the council also needs to approve conditional use permits. Uh, the Plan Commission held a public hearing earlier today in which, uh, no one, uh, spoke, uh, either for or against. Uh, there weren't any participants in the public hearing. But this, uh, pending the approval of this conditional use permit by the council, uh, there's an item next on the agenda that would then kind of kick this project off, uh, for construction in Milton.
Devon, any questions or comments?
No, it looks great.
Ryan?
Nope, no comments, questions.
Linda?
No comments, no questions.
Teresa? Larry?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, conditional use permit submitted by Catch the Wave, uh, Swim Club for construction of a swimming facility with caretaker residents.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and second by Bill, or Ryan and Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We're moving quicker to get in an indoor pool here. Um, discussion and possible action regarding a TIF development agreement with Catch the Wave Swim Club.
So in regards to the previous item, uh, the land that they plan to construct their facility on is a city-owned parcel within the existing TIF 6. The TIF development agreement, uh, with Catch the Wave that has been presented this evening would, uh, sell the property, the 1.16 acres to Catch the Wave for $1, so long as Catch the Wave generates at least $4,060 in annual property taxes over a 10-year period. That's the value of the land, uh, that would be in essence paid back through their taxes, uh, to the city of Milton for selling that land for a dollar. It is highly likely and highly probable that they will generate more than $4,000 on an annual basis, uh, which is good news for all parties involved. Uh, but so long as they generate at least $4,000 on an annual basis for a 10-year period, they would then forgive that, that, that portion of that loan, which is really, in this case, the consideration of the value of land. So it's really a pretty straightforward TIF development agreement, probably one of the more straightforward ones we've done. And, uh, one that, uh, again, is, is a win-win for the community. This parcel is small and been very difficult to market since I've been here, and it's been vacant, obviously, for a long, 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 long time. And I think this is a good use, uh, in this area and, uh, one that I think will be a benefit to, to the community.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Devon?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion? Linda?
Make a motion to approve the debt, the TIF development agreement between the city of Milton and Catch the Wave Swim Club Incorporated.
Second that.
All right, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 202026, authorizing the submittal of a TEA grant application to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation.
So this is a transportation, uh, T-grant, which basically stands for Transportation Facilities Economic Assistance Grant, which is through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. We were, we will be partnering, partnering with Clausen Quality Chocolates, Inc. for the application of this grant. The grant guidelines require that a municipality be the entity that applies for the grant. But as you can see in the resolution and, uh, future agreement with Clausen Quality Chocolates, they will be paying for their portion, uh, or the, the remnant portion of the, uh, facility. Uh, this is projected to be roughly about a $3.5 million rail extension in which the T-grant would cover 50%, and then Clausen Quality Chocolates would cover the remainder of that as part of their project, so long as all other contingencies of the project move forward. So the city of Milton would be the applicant, uh, but all, um, it shouldn't be handled through Clausen Quality Chocolates.
Um, okay, Devon, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Linda?
Questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Larry?
Bill, uh, the contingencies have to be met before the grant is released, or is it the other way around? I, I just was curious.
Sure. No, the, there are, there are a number of contingencies associated with this project. And in the event that those contingencies are not met, ultimately, uh, it's still the, it's still the intention of the city and Clausen Quality Chocolates to move forward with this grant application. But as the process moves forward, if those contingencies for the development project on a whole are not met, even if awarded this grant application, uh, Clausen would not move forward with this extension. At this time, there's really no reason to foresee that happening. Um, but I just wanted to make folks aware that, even by submitting this, there are still items that would need to be satisfied for the project to come to fruition. Uh, this wouldn't, this isn't just, this isn't the only piece of the puzzle. This is a very large mosaic. Um, and then trying to align, uh, the dominoes so they all fall sequentially. This is one domino in a long line.
And, and that's helpful. I, so my second question has already probably been answered. The city is in no way held, um, I don't, I don't know, how do I put this in lightweight, hostage by this process?
No. No, I mean, it's, yep. Yeah, you, you are correct. Yeah, the city has no financial obligation in, in this, uh, in this specific uh, T-grant application, whether the project, or whether the application is approved or not, uh, or the project moves forward or not, the city is not legally bound, uh, for any financial, uh, obligation at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Bill?
Uh, no questions. I assume the, uh, the name of the developer is out of the bag at this point?
Yes. Yeah, so this is the first time that we have released the name of the developer and, and they have given us permission to do so, because we're at the stage of the process now where that, uh, where, where we had to in order to, uh, make this a, uh, an acceptable application. They would need to be named in the resolution that is adopted by the council. So they are aware of this and, um,
Yep. Great.
Is there a motion? Teresa?
If I word it right, uh, recommend approval of Resolution 2020-26 to authorize submittal of a transportation facility economic assistance grant.
Same.
Right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding updates to the city's Family First Coronavirus Response Act policy.
I will let Inga take this one, as she is our FF-CRA expert and all things related to the coronavirus, Inga is the expert.
Well, I am trying. I will not be successful in every endeavor.
I'm just kidding.
Glad there's somebody we can blame.
If you'd looked at the frequently asked questions for the FF-CRA, it's a lot of information. But basically what we're doing here, we approved an FF-CRA policy back in April and we wanted to look at that again and do some updates to it based on our practices, what we're doing, and then just with the substantial increase of cases in Rock County, we've been very lucky in our organization to not be substantially impacted by that. But as the cases continue to rise, we're expecting to see some, some additional cases in our organization and we want to be prepared for those. So we included the redline version of the policy update in the packet and I'm just wondering if there are any questions on anything. We did give it to department heads to review and employees as well.
Did you have any feedback from employees or department heads regarding it?
Um, nothing substantial and any comments that we received back, they are reflected in the policy that was included in the packet.
I think the key piece to this, and it doesn't necessarily impact the actionable item on the agenda this evening, is that FFRCA is, is set to expire at this time on December 31st, 2020. So the policy that exists, whether, whether these updates are approved or not by the Council, the policy, the entire program is set to expire at the end of this year unless Congress acts to extend it. If that were to be the case, that Congress does not act to, act to extend the FFR-CRA program, the, any, any COVID-related illnesses or COVID-related loss of work would be covered under, under our existing employee handbook and, and work leave programs or policies.
Okay, Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make the motion to approve the updated Family First Coronavirus Response Act policy.
Second.
There's a motion by Linda and a second by Bill and a close second to the second by Teresa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. You guys are doing great. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number 479, amending section 10144 of the Milton Code of Ordinances, regulating electrical inspections of commercial buildings.
So because the city of Milton is authorized to perform electrical inspections, the DSPS or Department of Safety and Professional Services requires that we incorporate references to the newly created Wisconsin Administrative Code, SPS 316, within our ordinances. So if you follow all that, it's a kind of alphabet soup there, but we are required to adopt that as part of our ordinances. And even though we contract out our electrical inspections, inspections, the city of Milton is still the authorized agent to perform electrical inspections. So our ordinances would need to reflect the newly created DSPS, Chapter 316. So that's the purpose of this item on the agenda this evening, to make sure that we're in compliance with state code. Right, Howie?
You're muted, Howie.
I think you just said, yep.
He can't read Howie's lips now, because he talks so little.
Nah, this, it's for commercial inspections.
Yeah.
But it's a state, state requirement that you have to do it, so.
Hey. Devin, any questions or comments?
No.
This is clearly the most exciting item on the agenda this evening. That's why I put it last.
It's just
Because I figured people would bow out before now, I mean, I can't believe Dave and Keaton didn't hang around for this one. It's not sewer televising, but it's, you know.
It's a close
That's the best one, sewer televising, that's the best one.
Should be a standing agenda item, just an update on it. Ryan, anything?
Just random question, what if we were to decide not to pass it?
We would not be able to perform commercial electric, electrical inspections in the city of Milton, which would be, which means we couldn't issue, basically, we couldn't issue building permits.
That's kind of what I figured, I just wanted to ask it for fun.
Also, the, also the state would hire someone to do that.
Yeah.
And whoever they hire, that's just what you would pay.
Yeah.
Linda, doesn't sound appealing, huh?
No.
Teresa?
No questions.
Larry?
The same department oversees my licenses as a therapist, so I'm familiar with the pressure they can apply, so. I have no questions.
So they're like the Walgreens of state departments, they just do a little bit of everything?
Apparently.
All encompassing. Bill, anything?
No questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, but what is the motion you're making?
To approve ordinance 479, regulating electrical inspections, or actually amending section 10-144 of Milton Code of Ordinances. Think I got that a little reversed, let me restate it again.
You got Mark S. raising his hand.
Yeah, I'll maybe restate that again.
It's through the entire meeting.
I made a motion to approve ordinance 479, amending section 10-144 of the Milton Code of Ordinances, regulating electrical inspections of commercial buildings. Is that better?
No, it's not.
Waving the second, third reading, making a motion to adopt.
Thank you, it's, it's late. waving the second and third and adopting.
All right. And Bill is okay with that, he's seconding, he just wants to move things along tonight.
I think Bill wants a second reading, don't you?
On this one.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, all right. Before everybody's kids join us for our team building.
Oh man, the wolves are at, being kept at bay here barely.
Committee reports. Brian?
Historic preservation met at the city of Milton East Side Cemetery, and we were looking at restoring the Goodrich Plot there to some extent, cleaning it and possibly get, there's, used to be a kind of a concrete wall around the plot and it's since become buried and we're looking at kind of having that basically brought out a little bit. Not the exact term to use, but basically trying to maybe dig out around it a little bit so you can see the wall around it and then cleaning of the stones and stuff as part of historic preservation, historic preservation group.
And just an update on that, I'm meeting with the contractor at the site on Friday and he's planning to start work on Friday. So hopefully the Goodrich Plot's going to look a lot nicer in a couple hours, well not, towards the end of the week.
Because we're starting it tonight.
No, not, not tonight, sorry, on Friday.
Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, staff reports. Dan?
I got a couple emails back from Brian and Brian Meyer and John Jennings on the fire department. It's what I suspected, they have not heard anything from the contracted towns. But they are under the same impression we are that they believe that the four contracted towns are still trying to come up with a, figure out a way to meet the new contracts that are given to them. They sent those emails within the last hour or so, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right, Howie?
I'm just finishing up fall projects, leaves, brush, the parks bathrooms are all closed. And then just Mark and I are working on finishing up the street projects, so North Jamesville Street, Storm Sewer on Greenman Street and Madison Avenue, concrete.
I saw that big vacuum cleaner truck out.
Yeah. They're, right now they're double shifting so that we get, the guys adjusted their schedules, so we can get around town faster. So it's quieter than the old truck, so.
Yeah.
Even though it's bigger, so.
Um, Ashley?
Nothing really new to report, we have kind of put our story gardens in the storage for the winter and the library board will be approving our strategic plan next month, so that's exciting.
Yeah. Marky, Marky Mark.
Not much more than Howie, we had those water main valve replacements that took place last week and earlier this week. The concrete, Jamesville Street should be opened up hopefully next week.
And Chief? Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have much either. Awaiting a March 9th meeting of Wiley Ag, their board meeting should be voting on our three-year accreditation, so kind of on pins and needles, waiting to hear what their results are. I think that's about it.
No pressure, no stress, no, nothing. Inga?
I have no update.
Wow. Bill, anything?
Yeah, yesterday, like a thousand people came to City Hall.
Did they wear masks? I just need to know.
Really strange, so. Yeah, obviously held an election yesterday, things went very well. I am, I was blown away by the group of volunteers we had, many of them were brand new, many of them had never done, had participated in any election before and I had the opportunity to really chat with almost every single one of them. Some of them for extended period of time when we were working together and just a great group of people and dove right in and, you know, were really eager and helpful. I was thoroughly impressed by their willingness to help and their sense of civicness in their, in their motivate, motivations for doing so. It was just, it was great group of people and, you know, I think things went very well yesterday. The citizens who came through and voted, we didn't have any issues, there was no kind of craziness like you see on the national news anywhere. You know, it was, it was in terms of a November presidential election. You know, it went, from my perspective, it went very smoothly, the counting at the end of the night went very smoothly and, yeah, it was a good day, the weather helped, I think that kept everybody's spirits up.
Yeah, and people, you know, got, there was what, like 60 people in line first thing in the morning?
Yeah, that's what the courier said, I don't know if it was actually that many, but it was, you know, there was a good group of people out there, they were wrapped around the building, spaced six feet apart, so you know, they made it look like a, you know, maybe 60 people, but yeah, it was, it was a good group. But, you know, even that group was kind of ushered through the system in like 20 minutes, so. You know, it was, it was, it was good, so, you know, now we just need to wait and see if we got to do it all over again in a couple of weeks.
Just counting, now we don't have to bring every, the thousand people back.
No, yeah, and, and likely our role in that would be probably very limited, if, if, if any, other than just providing information. Because those, that, that kind of activity would be initiated at the state level and then trickle down to the county clerks and so when we did a recount in 2016, you know, we just sent a hand, a couple of people went up to the House and assisted them. It wasn't, it wasn't like we had to do like a full-blown tear, tear everything open and lay it all out on the, on the floor and count it and stuff, so. So if that comes, which I, I'm, it sounds like it will, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that too, so.
Did, did Leanne say how many outstanding absentee ballots we ended up with?
She, she hasn't sent the email out, but I think it was like 200?
Well, we
Don't quote me on that.
We were down to 70 at like
Oh.
two o'clock or something, I just didn't know how many additional were returned after that.
Oh, maybe it was 50 something then. She's going to send an email out on Friday with all those numbers. Once she has a chance to, she was running around this afternoon dropping stuff off at the county and here, there and everywhere, so.
Yep. So we had a lot of activity in the city of Milton on Saturday, also known as Halloween in the city of Milton, and we had a story walk, what did we call it, Ashley, at the library?
Yes, they're called story walks.
And we had, we did a scavenger hunt in four parks and we found almost every rock, so me and a couple other people painted 80 rocks and hit them at four different parks, 20 rocks apiece. And we got over 70 of them back and kids got a bag of candy and some other little souvenirs. And then families got entered into a family bucket drawing. And, and we drew those names on Monday. We also supported a virtual Halloween costume contest with human beings and animals with the library, which is really, really fun. And then the, the Milton High School had drive-through trick-or-treating, my, it was at Schilberg and they had like 400 cars go through. So it was beautiful weather and just a lot of fun things to do with families. We had trick-or-treating from 3:00 to 6:00, so you could actually have done socially distancing fun stuff from like 1:00 PM till 6:00 PM on Saturday. So we're going to do a community survey to follow up to see what families liked, what they want to do again next year with our Halloween activities. So we'll be excited to get those community survey results back too, so that was, that was exciting.
I have, I have one more staff update.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Just so folks are aware, we have a very distinguished guest in our presence this evening. Our chief of police has a big birthday today, so I wanted to wish him happy birthday on his special day. And, and when I was at his birthday party earlier today, he said his one wish for his birthday was to be able to go first at team building, so.
Zoom just doesn't work, that's the problem, he didn't hear it right.
Did it break up when you said that?
Oh, well that's good. Then I don't have to make Mark S. go first.
It's Scott's 40th birthday today.
Oh, you're kidding, oh my gosh, what a milestone.
Birthday to you.
Oh no.
Happy birthday to you.
Where's our virtual birthday cake, Inga?
Hold it, let me find one.
I've been staring at this the entire meeting.
There's, there's the virtual birthday cake.
No, that's not virtual, that's a real one.
I know, that looks so delicious.
That's great.
So Scott brought treats for everybody?
Virtually.
Virtually everyone.
Nice job, nice job, thank you for celebrating your birthday with us.
Yeah.
Okay. I think I'm allergic to being in my office with many hours at a time. My nose keeps running. My eyes are watering. You guys are making me cry. All right, team building. All right, so um, here it is. Are you all ready for it? It's really, um, it's a thoughtful one, so not fun at all. Um, what would you like to spend more time doing? What area of your life or hobby or what has COVID maybe put some pressure on you to neglect and we need to get you all back on track, so um, just a little bit, a little self-care maybe to, like, what area do you think you would like to be spending more time on? Besides eating birthday cake and turning forty? Scott?
That's, that's Scott's birthday cake behind.
Bill, it looks like you're on fire.
Yeah.
I thought you were just on fire, not the birthday cake.
Thanks, Bill. I don't, I don't know that there's fifty on there, but yeah, the point's made.
Al said forty. He never said anything about fifty.
Yeah.
He disclosed it.
There it is, yeah. I put it out there. It's legal. So I have to go first, is that?
You do, you do.
Yeah, um, there's, there just hasn't been that much downtime. So I carving out just some more leisure time would be lovely.
Yep, I bet. I bet with a accreditation or, am I saying that right? And then just everything else. Yeah, yeah. So I'm just going to go around the squares because it's just so annoying to me to have to wait for everybody, so I'm just going to call. I just have to call on people. So be ready, be ready. You got it? Everybody got it? Okay, all right, I'm going to go up the right side of my screen. Left side to all of you. Devin?
There just wasn't enough time this year for more golf.
Okay, okay. Um, Mark S?
Well, more time with, or fishing with friends and family.
Okay. It's so nice that we're recording this because I can go back and write these down and then, you know, ask you in a few months how you're doing on this or next year. Oh, my gosh. Who just switched the screen around?
Sorry. I didn't do it.
You're like, literally, you're all in different places now. All right. Okay, so now my right screen looks different. And, um, I'm going to go with Teresa. It doesn't count if you're not unmuted.
Okay, the one thing that I haven't been able to do because of COVID is the one thing that I wanted to do, and that's travel. So that's one thing that I would really like to to do.
Inga? I'm blaming you for the squares all moving.
It wasn't me. Um, I, I think just spending more time with my family that's back in Verona, I've seen my mom once since March, and I haven't seen my sister since March at all, so I'm just wanting to get back hanging out with them again.
Mm-hmm. Linda?
Well, I guess I kind of have to follow with what everybody else is doing. The traveling is what's been really not a good thing for us. You know, we haven't been able to get out to Arizona, and we've got a lot of things going on out there, too.
Okay, Larry?
I I guess more, more me time, you know, that's on screen, but I've been awfully busy during this COVID time season with my work and my private practice job and my volunteer work. It seems like I'm on actually more meetings now with Zoom than I on my boards that I'm on. We tend to meet more often, so just a little more me time. Kind of like Mark, I'd like to do some hunting, some more fishing, things like that, so. That's what I do.
Dan?
I'd say international travel. I lost a three-week trip that was planned in June and and my ability to go to Wrigley Field.
Oh, yeah, we're crushed about that. Okay, so now I'm moving over to the left side of my screen. And Bill?
I'm going to put the opposite spin on the travel thing because, you know, back when I was working full-time, I'd be out of town hundred nights or more per year, so I don't miss traveling at all. It's been nice not getting on airplanes. What I, what I miss is having other people travel here and, you know, entertaining them and, you know, having dinner with friends at home and that kind of thing and and family.
Yeah. Howie?
No umpiring, no refereeing, and no running the Rock and Roll Half Marathon in Las Vegas, so.
Yeah. Ashley?
Well, I'm kind of an introvert and a homebody, and a lot of my family lives in town, so I've had plenty of time for all of that. I could always use more time to read, I guess. My mind's been a little crazy sometimes, so I don't feel like I can read, so have more time to read is always good.
Ryan?
I've missed reenacting. Haven't had any this year, basically, any events this year, all been canceled, so kind of miss that.
Marky Mark?
Um, probably just hanging out kind of like normal again with friends and family, but a fun, another fun one would be to go into a Packer game. Like try to go to one a year.
Yeah. Al?
Yeah, mine's probably the same as everybody, you know. You know, miss, miss my friends that, you know, don't really, really see anymore and um, you know, as as they know, my mom has been in hospice since March, and I haven't seen her since then, so can't, can't go visit her, and yeah, that's been very strange, thirty-nine years.
Yeah. I miss, um, I miss going out to eat with my mom. Frequently when I go up there, she says, what, oh, I suppose we can't go out to eat. I'm like, no, we still can't go out to eat. So just those, that, that sense of normalcy that isn't normal anymore, like it's abnormal to do everything we normally would be doing. So did I get everybody? So what I'm hearing you say is we need to do a group fishing, golfing, we need to put on a play together. What other things do we need to do? We need to invite some of our relatives to a city council meeting so we can all enjoy each other's families and relatives. And, you know, have some time for for our kids. I believe you should have a bring a kid to a council meeting day, shouldn't we? Or a pet? Yay, there's, hey, what happened to Carrie? Am I saying her right? Carrie Kunkel left before team building. Ashley, do you know her?
She's my cousin. She's my cousin. I told her she should maybe leave before team building because she would probably be roped in.
She for sure would be roped in. Now she has to come back to another council meeting because she didn't get the full experience.
I will, I will let her know for sure.
Okay. Oh, there's our kid. We need a kid, a kid and a cat, maybe a dog. We got a birthday cake.
You got some hair, young man.
Yeah.
Your hair's growing back.
Okay, your dad isn't growing old. He's growing younger.
He's still got some patches.
Looking good. You're looking good. Oh, there we go. Oh, look at that.
Hey, hey.
Nice, nice. Yeah, don't you have a puppy to jump up on your dad's lap, too? And a cat?
She's upstairs.
Sleeping under the under the table.
Looking for all the food she dropped at dinner.
That's where mine go, too.
Zerg.
Okay, all right, um, our next meeting, because we love spending time together, November seventeenth. We'll talk more about the budget and other fun things. And that's all I got. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm waiting. Okay, second, I saw your hand, Linda, but I didn't hear anything from you. Oh, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? There's nobody opposed. We all get to say goodbye. So that was Bill and Ryan. Inga, did you get that?
Yep, I did.
All right, we're adjourned.
Happy birthday, Scott. Goodbye, everyone.
Thank you. It's kick time.
Happy birthday.
Bye-bye.